The process allows for regional planning commissioners to work with communities to develop local and regional needs and priorities. And that allows the department to make recommendations to GASSIT and the legislature. Ultimately, the New Hampshire Legislature determines what the final priorities are relative to transportation projects in New Hampshire. Each cycle of the 10-year plan takes about two years to complete. And as one cycle ends, a new cycle begins. For this 2021 to 2030 10-year plan cycle, the process begins in the fall of 2018 with the planning commissioners working with their staff, cities, and towns to weigh in on the transportation priorities within their regions. The department then took the commissioner’s input and its own ideas and prepared a draft of the 10-year plan. In addition, informational GASSIT meetings were held on June 19th, July 31st, and August 14th, 2019. Following the public hearings last month and this month, the department will take a revised draft 10-year plan for GASSIT to consider at meetings to be held in November in Concord. Consequently, the 10-year plan will be forwarded to the governor in December, who will then turn it forward to the legislature in January 2020. The legislature will hold additional hearings and enact a 10-year plan into law by June 2020. Then the process begins again, and we’ll be back here in Bedford talking about the next plan. There has already been much discussion and coverage in the press regarding financial status of the 10-year plan. It is important for us to hear your comments and thoughts on this. Written comments regarding the 10-year plan may be submitted through November 8th, 2019, to the Department of Transportation. The address is NHDOT, PO Box 483, Concord, New Hampshire, 03302. Attention, Bill Watson. This address is also noted on the bottom of your agenda. Peter Stammas, Director of the Project Development for the Department of Transportation, will make a presentation within a 15-minute timeframe. And then Nate Miller from the New Hampshire... will discuss regional priorities and other themes of concerns that have come up in the technical committees. So with that being said, here’s Peter Stammas from the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Counselor. Good evening. A few introductions before I get started. Commissioner Victoria Sheehan here, next to Counselor Gatzis. Assistant Commissioner Bill Cass in the audience. Glenn Davison, project manager for DOT on the update of the 10-year plan. We also have some additional planning staff in the audience. So we’ve met on multiple occasions with GASSIT to really discuss the funding scenarios, to look at and discuss the investment needs, to look at asset condition, not only current asset condition, but projected asset condition on the system, in an effort to identify strategies to develop this draft of the 10-year plan. We have lots of investment needs, and there aren’t enough funds out there to meet all those needs. So we made some recommendations to GASSIT, and, you know, from a recommendation standpoint, these are the strategies that we recommended in order to develop the draft 10-year plan. First and foremost, we’re going to maintain and preserve the existing system. Focus investment on pavement preservation, also on bridge preservation and red-list bridges. We’re going to dedicate SB 367 funds for TIFI alone, pledge rural roads and bridges, completion of I-93 Salem to Manchester, and increase funding for I-93 Exit 4A Dairy and London Dairy. We’re going to financially constrain the federal program to $183 million per year, and that’s level federal funding across the entire 10-year period. Include $50 million for Regional Planning Commission priority projects, $25 million in each year, and the last two years, 29 in 2030. We’re going to address major project cost increases on Exit 4A, I-93, Bo Concord, Interstate 4R projects by issuing Garvey bonds for two major bridge projects that are included in the plan, Hensdale Brattleboro and Seaburk Hampton. We’re going to delay Bo Concord, I-93 construction effort by two years, from 2024 to 2026. We’re going to transfer 25% or $2.2 million of the congestion mitigation and air quality funds to other federal categories. We’re going to maintain and extend all programs by two years. And we’re going to invest additional SB 367 revenue in paving to improve projected condition, and we’re going to increase investment in the bridge and resurfacing programs to mitigate inflationary impacts. The next couple of slides are going to be a general overview or synopsis of the funding and the plan, beginning with the federal highway funding. So the federal funding is provided by the FAST Act, and the FAST Act runs out in 2020. Our 2020 apportionment, or the money that we get to spend, is approximately $183 million. And given the uncertainty of the federal program, the recommendation was to maintain that at level funding throughout the 10-year plan with $183 million. And the breakout for that $183 million from a project standpoint, paving and bridge projects average around $107 million annually. Mandated federal programs like CMAC, the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality, or Highway Safety Improvement Program, HSIP, average around $31 million per year. Garvey debt service through 2025 is $24 million per year. Garvey is a bond that was issued to construct a good portion of I-93 Salem to Manchester. The balance of the funding, $21 million, is invested in individual roadway projects throughout the 10-year plan on average $21 million per year. On the state side, betterment funding, $24 million per year for preservation and maintenance of roads and bridges, not addressed with federal funding. Turnpike funding for capital and turnpike renewal and replacement averages around $67 million per year. SB 367 funding for I-93 expansion, state aid bridge, and TIFI debt service. So SB 367 raised the gas tax by four cents, and issued, again, a $200 million loan, TIFI loan, to finish construction on I-93 Salem to Manchester. That four cents gas tax raises around $36 million per year. 12% comes off the top, goes to municipal block grant aid, left with $32 million. That is distributed as follows. State aid bridge gets $6.8 million per year, and that’s the program that invested municipal bridges. I-93 debt service on that TIFI loan, through 2025, averages around $2 million per year, and that’s an interest-only payment on that $200 million loan. Through 2025, as part of that TIFI note, there was a pledge that we would pave and complete a bridge work on red-list bridges in rural roads and rural areas. $14 million per year on paving, $9 million per year on bridges. Again, that pledge ends in 2025, when the full debt service on that TIFI note kicks in at $23.4 million per year. Again, through 2020, we’ll be paying that from through 2034. Other modes: airport, $288 million programmed in this draft 10-year plan. Transit, total of $312 million programmed. 60% goes to small urban, national UZA and Boston UZA public transit providers, and the balance goes to rural transit seniors and individuals with disabilities. This mode also includes the Capital Corridor project development phase, which was introduced through Senate Bill 241. Rail, $10.5 million program in this draft. Active transportation. So active transportation categories are bike ped, trails, paths, complete streets, curb ramps, sidewalks, shoulder widenings. Throughout this draft 10-year plan, we’ve identified $174 million in investment in active transportation, approximately $141 million in 46 individual projects, and $33 million across three programs: the ADA program, the Transportation Alternatives Program, and the Rec Trail Program. Again, have a transportation focus. This handout is in your supplement, and it maps all of those projects that we have identified as active transportation elements, and the projects are listed on the backside, again, in your supplement. Some of the notable program funding changes: $10 million per year added to the resurfacing program in the out-years, 2029 and 2030. That’s to mitigate for inflation. $6.5 million to the bridge preservation programs for the same reason in 2029 and 2030. Those additional SB 367 revenue estimates this summer added $2 million to those revenue, and the $2 million will be used for the resurfacing program through 2025, and as a million and a half in the outer years, that will go to the resurfacing program also. Betterment revenue also up, and that’s going to the resurfacing program, $1 million per year. There were five red-list bridges added to the two outer years, one interstate rehabilitation project to 2030, and again, the CMAC program was reduced by $2.2 million to a total of $8.9 million per year. This chart is in your 10-year plan and also in your supplement, and it’s an all-funding chart, so it identifies expenditures across category types. So the categories are across the top: pavement, bridges, transit, airports. Each year is totaled up, and each category is summed with percentages. It gives you a sense for where the funding is going, to what type of category, what type of work it’s going to, and this is across all funding types, both state and This comparison chart looks at the current 10-year plan, 2019 through 2028, in green, that’s on the bottom, and the draft 10-year plan in blue, and it compares how the category expenditures have changed between the two plans. The draft 10-year plan has $176 million more in investments than the current 10-year plan. The $3.92 billion plan and some of the major increases are listed in bullets below. Again, all this information is in your supplement. This graphic represents red-list bridge totals across time. It runs from 2003 to 2031. Well, in the middle there, you see a sharp black line. Everything to the left of that line is actual numbers of red-list bridges on the state system, to the right is projected. So a bridge makes it onto the red list in one of its three major elements, receives a poor condition rating during its normal inspection cycle. That’s a rating of four on a scale of one to 10. And so currently, there are 129 red-list bridges on the state system. And you note, if you note, to the left, this fluctuates quite a bit over time, and it’s dependent on how many bridges are coming on to the red list and how much we can invest in taking them off. So currently, 129. As we move to the right, projections, we expect the projection for the red-list bridges by 2026 to be low on this chart of 124. As we get to the end of the 10-year plan, we expect it to increase to 146 on the state system. These projections are based on the average investment on the state system in the draft 10-year plan of $77 million per year. The 124 number is the lowest it’s been, and so we’re doing a pretty good job overall in the initial portion of this plan. A lot of that’s being driven by some of the one-time investments: HB 1817, its general fund surplus, $10 million to the municipal side, $20 million to the state side, and I mentioned the SB 367 investments on rural roads and bridges. Also, our investment in our bridge preservation program is starting to pay dividends, and it’s slowing the rate of bridges coming on to the red list. Overall, there are 125 bridges that’ll be addressed, 129 on the red list, and those are through individual projects listed and also through our Operations Division Bureau of Bridge Maintenance. Again, we predict this increase mainly, a lot of it has to do with inflation, so the inflationary pressures on the program, and also the sunsetting of the SB 367 bridge pledge. Similar, this is a graphic that shows the miles paved on the top per year, and the road condition on the state system that is in good affair condition. So just like the bridges, here’s 2019. Everything to the left here shows miles paved. This dark line here represents 500. Generally, that’s our target on an annual basis. If we don’t pave 500 miles in a year, it tends to push the condition of the roads down. And so you see, again, it fluctuates over time, and that’s dependent on the investment that we have on the roads and in the resurfacing program. So our projections, again, from the right, going to the right here, and our condition projections are based on a $74 million per year investment that’s included in this draft 10-year plan on the system. And similar to the bridge, similar to the bridge conditions, our bridge condition in the next five or six years is expected to be pretty, I’m sorry, the road, the pavement condition over the next six years is expected to be the best it’s been over this time period since 1994, around 80% good affair. Over time, we expect the condition to drop about 15% to 68% good affair. Again, the TIFI road pledge and the inflationary pressures are impacting our ability to deliver mileage. Up here, you see the mileage drop from 548 to 335, and that drives the condition changes overall on the roads. Just a little bit more about SB 367 funding and four cent gas tax. It also generates $257 million for this pledge. We expect 2,175 miles overall of paving to be completed, and many of those miles would not have been completed if not for this pledge due to the funding issues that we have. It also includes work on 25 red-list bridges. There are two are complete, seven are in construction, and 16 are in design or will start designing soon. The map on the right is posted on the website, and it shows the segments of road and the bridges that are identified in this pledge. Another funding chart, another way to look at the funding. This is a expenditure by funding category. 10-year plan, this draft is a multimodal plan, and it includes funding for all modes. And each one of these categories is specific types of funding, and each type comes with eligibility rules. And so it limits our ability to move funds from one category to another because of those rules. So it limits our investment choices and the discretion that we have. This chart also identifies revenue, and the plan is constrained, $3.92 billion in revenue and $3.92 billion in expenditures, planned investments. Again, multimodal: airport, transit, rail. This is the mark dividing line for the highway and bridge, other modes. This is about 85. Everything to the right, to the left here is 85% of the plan. Everything to the right is 15%. So it’s highway-focused, but that’s the funding that we have. And... That’s all I can say about that. I’m going to have to sit there, I think.
Froze.
He froze. Another rainbow comparison chart. This, again, this compares the current 10-year plan to the draft 10-year plan, shows that $176 million change, and also the changes by various categories. In the strategies, I identified the $50 million in Regional Planning Commission priorities that are included in the plan. This identifies the nine regional, the nine regions, the number of projects per region, and the federal allotment that make up that $50 million total, 26 projects, $50 million. And Nate Miller will talk a little bit more about this region’s priority projects. Counselor Gatzis, District 4, there are 54 projects, $1 billion worth of work. The district is shown in yellow. This is also in your supplement, and the table on the left shows you the investment by project type. And again, this is in your supplement on the backside. You’ll see in these maps, you’ll see listing of the projects. And with that, I’m going to turn it over to Nate Miller for regional priorities.
Thank you. This is working. Okay. All right. Nice job, Glenn. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Nate Miller. I’m the Deputy Director of the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. As Pete mentioned, we are one of nine regional planning commissions around New Hampshire. Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission includes the town of Bedford, so we are, you’re in the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission region tonight. What is our role as a regional planning commission in the 10-year plan process? Well, as Counselor Gatzis mentioned in his introduction, the development of the 10-year plan is a partnership between New Hampshire DOT and the nine regional planning commissions. Our job under RSA 22899 and RSA 240 is to solicit projects every two years from our 14 communities in the region, and then we work with representatives of those 14 municipalities to evaluate and prioritize those projects and put forward our priorities to the Department of Transportation for inclusion in the draft 10-year plan. All nine regional planning commissions do this around the state. As Pete mentioned at the end of his presentation, for the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, our revenue estimate for programming projects in this 10-year plan was $8.554 million. And our commission took a two-pronged approach to programming that funding. First was to advocate with New Hampshire DOT to ensure that major projects of statewide significance in our region were fully funded and would proceed according to their schedules. I will talk about four of those major projects in just a minute. And then where we really focused that $8.5 million was adding supplemental funding to existing underfunded local and regional projects in the 10-year plan. We did not add any new projects in the region in this 10-year plan cycle. We took a hard look at what was in the 10-year plan and the amount of funding that was programmed for the projects in our region in the 10-year plan, and identified a couple of those projects as being significantly underfunded. And so we wanted to make sure that those projects got to the finish line according to their schedule, and that’s where we committed the majority of our $8.5 million allocation for this cycle. And I’ll talk specifically about what those projects are in a few minutes. First, I mentioned the major projects in our region. Of course, the biggest, most significant project in our region and in the state right now is the expansion of I-93 from Salem to Manchester. This project, from a construction perspective, will be coming to an end early in this 2021 to 2030 10-year plan cycle. Construction’s been ongoing for many years. The final projects are making their way to construction right now, including the fourth lane of I-93. However, if you look at the draft 10-year plan, you’ll see a number of projects listed as Salem to Manchester projects. Those are debt service projects. So we will continue to be paying for elements of the I-93 expansion in the form of debt service throughout this 10-year plan. Pete mentioned in one of his early slides, Exit 4A in Dairy and London Dairy. The draft 10-year plan increases funding for this project. This project has seen cost increases, and the department has worked closely with the towns of Dairy and London Dairy to really get a handle on what those cost increases are and look at ways of bringing that project to construction as efficiently and cost-effectively as possible. The construction of that project is scheduled for 2021 through 2024. So it is moving forward, but it did see a cost increase in this 10-year plan. The reconstruction of Exits 6 and 7 on I-293 in Manchester, another very significant project in the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission region. There really isn’t any significant change in the project schedule or funding for that project. The Exit 7 component of that project is still scheduled to start first in 2024 and continue through 2026. After the start of Exit 7, Exit 6 will start, and that is scheduled, Exit 6 scheduled from 2025 to 2028. I would be remiss in not mentioning that on October 30th, there is a public hearing, and you should all consider yourselves invited to participate in that public hearing at, I believe it’s the Manchester Community College at 6:30 PM on October 30th. They will be presenting the design alternatives and the preferred alternative for Exit 6 and 7, and be welcoming public feedback that evening. The widening of the Effie Everett Turnpike from Nashua through Merrimack and into the town of Bedford is proceeding towards construction in this 10-year plan. Construction is still scheduled to occur between 2021 and 2025. As it relates to our regional allocation of $8.5 million for this 10-year plan cycle, I mentioned that we took a hard look at existing 10-year plan projects, and we identified a couple of those as being underfunded. In particular, we focused on the three projects on the screen here, two of which are here in the town of Bedford. The first is a Bedford project to widen US Route 3 South River Road from Hawthorne Drive to the Manchester Airport access road. That is a bottleneck area. It’s long been a priority for the town of Bedford. We added this project into the 10-year plan two cycles ago, and I’ll talk more detail about that project in a minute, but that is underfunded in the existing 10-year plan. Two years ago, in the last 10-year plan update cycle, at the request of the town of Bedford, we added a corridor study of Route 114 in the 10-year plan. I’ll talk more about how that is changing in this draft 10-year plan. And then we had an underfunded project in the town of Windham on Route 28 and Ralston Road. This is an intersection that has a significant crash history and some real safety concerns, and I’ll talk a little bit more about that in a moment as well. Of note, in this cycle, we utilized the services of an on-call engineering firm, VHB Incorporated, which is based here in Bedford, or has an office here in Bedford, I should say, and they helped us to develop current engineering cost estimates for these projects that, to make sure that the program, the funding that gets programmed into the 10-year plan is a realistic cost estimate for these projects. So the Route 3 widening from Hawthorne Drive to the Manchester Airport access road. As I mentioned, we added this project four years ago, two cycles ago, into the 10-year plan at the request of the town of Bedford. It is currently programmed with, for $5.5 million with construction scheduled in 2026. That project is actually about a $20 million project in today’s dollars. So we recognized this as being significantly underfunded in the 10-year plan, and we committed a substantial portion of our region’s allocation to add supplemental funding to this project to get it closer to the finish line. We are not at the finish line yet. This 10-year plan programs additional funding and brings the project funding up to $13.27 million with construction scheduled to begin in 2026. And in the 10-year plan update two years from now, we’ll be talking about this project again, because we are not there yet. We’re closer, but we’re not there yet. And so it was important for our regional planning commission to try to make sure that the projects on the 10-year plan have the best chance of being delivered on schedule as possible. The Route 114 corridor study is actually in Bedford and Goffstown. It was Bedford’s request two years ago to add a corridor study of Route 114 through the town of Bedford all the way to Mast Road in Goffstown. Goffstown concurred with that request, endorsed that request, and supported it, and it got added to the 10-year plan. At the request of the town of Goffstown in this cycle, Goffstown said, “Please extend the limits of the corridor study from Mast Road to Henry Bridge Road in Goffstown.” We asked our engineering consultants to look at whether that would change. to look at whether that would change the cost. It would, would not change the cost. The cost would be negligible to extend the corridor study to Henry Bridge Road. And so that was our, our recommendation to the DOT. The DOT actually concurred with that recommendation. We expect the 10-year plan to, when it's adopted, to reflect that this project goes to Henry Bridge Road. The current draft 10-year plan still has the old scope listed. So the old scope is still listed in the draft 10-year plan, is ending at Mast Road. But that does need to be changed before this 10-year plan is adopted, and, and we have no reason to think that there's an issue with, with doing that. The Route 28 and Ralston Road intersection project in the town of Windham, currently scheduled for, or currently programmed for $233,000 with construction in fiscal year 2026. In the world of transportation, $233,000 in $2026 does not carry you very far down an intersection improvement project. We recognized that pretty quickly. We asked our engineering consultants to evaluate that project. And in this draft 10-year plan, the project is programmed for $1.54 million. So it saw a significant cost increase. One of the reasons for that is there, there's actually an impaired brook that is, flows near this intersection. There's an existing box culvert there that will need to be upsized to a bridge structure as, as part of this intersection project. That's driving about a half million dollars of this cost increase. And it's really unavoidable. We have, you know, environmental constraints at that particular location that need to be addressed. But in any case, the supplemental funding added to this Wyndham project does help us better reflect the scope and, and helps us to ensure that that project is going to get to the finish line as it's anticipated to. I want to note a couple of other quick highlights about projects that affect the town of Bedford. There's a project listed in the draft 10-year plan. The DOT's been working on it for some time now. It is listed as Bedford-Merrimack Project 161002. It deals with the Bedford Toll Plaza on the Effie Everett Turnpike. And the project is to institute either open road tolling, like you would see in Hooksit, or all electronic tolling with no booths. The DOT has commissioned a feasibility study to, to evaluate those alternatives, and we look forward to hearing what, what their preferred alternative is. So changes, improvements are coming to the Bedford Toll Plaza. And we anticipate those changes to be constructed in 2022 and 2023. There's a bridge rehabilitation or replacement project on Route 101 over Pulpit Brook. This is coming through the, the DOT's Bureau of Bridge Design through their normal bridge inspection process where they program structurally deficient bridges for replacement or rehabilitation. This bridge over Pulpit Brook is programmed for $4 million with construction in 2021 and 2022. Lastly, I would be remiss in not, not noting that Senate Bill 241 passed earlier this year. Therefore, the 10-year plan includes funding to advance the project development phase of the Capitol Corridor project. That, that includes engineering, environmental work, third-party operating agreements, and most importantly, a financial plan, both for capital and operating, of what, what a passenger rail service would look like in the Capitol Corridor. I mention that here because the preliminary studies that were done a few years ago for the Capitol Corridor identified a potential station here in the town of Bedford that would provide basically, you know, connectivity via a shuttle or other service to the Manchester-Boston Regional Airport. So there would be potential rail capital improvements that would, that would occur as part of the Capitol Corridor project if it proceeds, and potentially a station that, that would provide some level of connectivity to the airport if that project ultimately moves forward towards construction. With that, I will yield the floor back to you, Counselor, and appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much. And I will hear from the public, and I would ask the public if they could limit their comments to three minutes. And if you are repeating what the person in front of you is saying, I would just like to ask you to say, I agree with that person or the person that was before them. So with that, we'll start with Doug Payne.
My name is Doug Payne, and I live on Hilton Drive. And we are contending with a problem there with very heavy traffic, primarily southbound in the afternoon rush hour. It's been a problem for some time now, and it's going to get worse particularly with the flatly, a flatly building project there. And something needs to be done about it. We've had a number of meetings in Merrimack talking about this. I'm kind of a lesser person involved with it. But of all of the alternatives that we've talked about, it seems that an exit ramp off the Everett where Exit 12 is, and an on-ramp to the Everett from Exit 12 would alleviate some of the problem. We don't know how much, at least I don't know how much it would have to be, a, a study would have to be undertaken. And also, in particular, where the, the flatly building becomes filled up with residents, I don't know how many apartments there. I think 250, something like that. So a lot of additional traffic will be coming through there. It's a mess in the morning. It has at times backed up from Bedford Road up to the Exit 13 ramps off Route 3. It's, I don't know, three to four miles, something of that sort. So we don't, I don't fully understand why they didn't put on and off ramps there. It had to do, I think, with an individual who was able to get it stopped when the original Everett was built many years ago. And it needs to be corrected. We don't know for certain how much impact that will have on the traffic. There's no traffic light on the, on Hilton Drive in particular. I've already read that they're not going to do anything about that. Where the flatly building is, there is no traffic light there. Traffic lights could help move the traffic, provide a break for those people who are trying to turn, let's say, left out of Hilton Drive or right out of Hilton Drive in some cases, and when the traffic's heavy in the other direction. So that is worth looking at. Again, I don't know how many vehicles are involved, probably thousands. And it's an everyday thing on the work week. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Representative Dick Hinch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, members of the Gassett Commission. Again, thank you very much for your presentation. And we can see that the, the funding requests for the future are, are pretty well impacted. And, but I'm going to come and ask you for something different. As Mr. Payne just talked about with the Everett, with the Route 3, Daniel Webster Highway, actually, it, it becomes more than just Hilton Drive for the last several years with the new construction that's happening in town. The bottleneck really starts on the DW Highway at Exit 10 and is exacerbated when there is a accident on Everett Turnpike, which regrettably happens every single day. So both north and south is impacted that way. If, if the accident happens on the Everett, then the people dump off at Exit 13, come all the way down the DW Highway, and that's what has the adverse effect there. Obviously, if it's a northbound, it, people will dump off at Exit 10 and then travel through town. And that bottlenecks both between Exit 10 and 11. So I would ask that you respectfully consider at least, at a minimum, putting a traffic study in to see what the solution can be. I agree with Mr. Payne that, that at least, at a minimum, thinking about a, a full interchange both on and off where Exit 12 used to be, and I say "used to be," would be most desirable to relieve some of that pressure because there is a lot going both ways. There's a lot of construction, new construction, the apartments that he talked about, flatly. We also have the new housing that has been, is in the construction phase right now across from the Common Man, which is actually Exit 11. So the, the problem gets worse all the time. And so we're here, I'm here to ask you to consider at a minimum doing a traffic study to see what the right solution is for the future. And I appreciate that we have a lot of funding priorities and needs. And so one would say, where does the funding come from? But, you know, if we can at least do a study, that's a start. And then put it, put the results of that study onto the 10-year plan for the future. So I thank you for your time and, and your patience.
Thank you, Representative, Representative Nancy Murphy.
Good evening. I am here to support the many Merrimack residents who have spoken out about their concerns with just getting in or out of our town. The highway is often bumper to bumper, especially at commuter times in the morning and in the evening. The alternative road, Daniel Webster Highway, which is bumper to bumper. We do, we have a number of accidents on the highway, which further compounds delays and, and makes it actually unsafe to travel. We have tolls to get in and out of town. And as Mr. Payne suggested, Exit 12, you know, we can go southbound, but we can't get on and go northbound. I agree that that might be something to take into consideration, and I would fully support the request for a traffic study to address what is becoming, with additional development in Merrimack, a serious problem. One that actually impacts people wanting to move there because they read about the challenges just moving around within our town. So I would thank you. Anything that you could do to, to support that, I think the residents would be greatly appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Fox.
Good evening, Councilor Gattis, Commissioner Sheehan. I'm going to read a letter from Town Manager Eileen Cavanaugh.
How long? In three minutes, is it?
No, it isn't. Thank you for providing this opportunity for the town of Merrimack to provide comments to the Governor's Council on Intermodal Transportation as you work through the creation and adoption of the 2021 to 2030 10-year transportation improvement plan. The town of Merrimack and the surrounding area, surrounding region has experienced tremendous growth and economic development in the last few years. And with that growth comes the need for transportation improvements in Merrimack. I offer the following comments for the commission's consideration. First, following the success of the opening of the Airport Access Road and Exit 13 in Bedford in November of 2011, traffic along the northern part of US Route 3 has increased by 25 to 30% over the past six years. The town would like to request that a project be implemented to study this corridor and to give serious consideration to the completion of the northern connections of Bedford Road and Exit 12 interchange with the turnpike. Additional information on this topic is in the package that I handed out earlier. Next, Merrimack has one transportation alternatives program project in the draft 10-year plan. It's project number 40300. This project will provide connectivity to a number of Merrimack's trail systems, connecting schools, residents, and recreation areas. The project is near the final design stages with an expected advertising date for construction in March of 2019, but has been listed in the draft 10-year plan with a construction date of 2024. The town requests that this project be allowed to advertise for construction as previously scheduled in fiscal 1920. The Route 101A improvements in Merrimack, project number 10136D, should remain with construction years of 21, 2021, 2022, as is scheduled in both the current 10-year plan and the draft 10-year plan. The improvements in this project are necessary for the major east-west corridor in the region as it will provide increased safety and reduce traffic congestion in the area. The US Route 3 Bridge over Babusak Brook, project number 29174, will replace a red list bridge and provide safer travel for pedestrians and cyclists over the bridge. It is important that this project remain as scheduled in the draft 10-year plan and not be pushed any further. The project is currently scheduled in the Transportation Improvement Program for construction in fiscal '23, and has been proposed in the draft 10-year plan as fiscal '24 and '25. Finally, safety and capacity improvements of the Daniel Webster Highway and Yer Road intersection are part of project number 41588. These much-needed improvements continue to be proposed for fiscal '27. Ideally, this project would move ahead in the draft, in the 10-year plan, constructing fiscal '24, '25, as it directly abuts the US 3 project, bridge project that I just spoke of. Doing so would provide an economy of scale in both the design and construction of both projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Representative Bob LaRue.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you, to you, Representative Bob LaRue, Town of Merrimack. A little background information, I've been on the Merrimack Highway Safety Committee for over 35 years, so I've dealt with a variety of traffic issues in Merrimack. Most of them, we haven't been able to resolve in one way or another because they were in direct control of the town of Merrimack. But once in a while, something happens and it's out of our control. And we have to thank the state for this. The situation that exists right now between Bedford Road north to the Airport Access Road is a disaster waiting to happen. It is impossible for the people, the residents of Hilton Drive, to put, to come out to take a left on Route 3. It is impossible for the residents of Priscilla Lane to come out to Route 3 and take a left to go north. The traffic is backed up, as you heard earlier, Kyle gave you some numbers. I'm not going to start repeating numbers. In the summertime, you have this traffic that's backed up, and you have literally thousands of cars sitting there idling. The people along that corridor cannot have their windows open because of the pollution coming in. The state is in part responsible for this program, this problem. As such, they should solve the problem. Now, let me tell you what cannot happen. Route 3 cannot be widened. There's no right of way to it. Traffic lights cannot be installed at Priscilla Lane or Hilton Drive because they're only talking a couple hundred yards apart. So that's out of the question. So what's the solution? A possible solution? A full exit at Exit 12. Now, it's going to cost money? Yes. But let me tell you what it's not going to cost. The state owns the money, excuse me, the money, the state owns the land on both sides of the turnpike. They own from the turnpike to Back River Road, from Bedford Road past nontransmission. I will admit, there is a small wetland area there that can easily be mitigated. That's not an issue. There's also a traffic light at Back River Road and Bedford Road. You don't have to have a whole new setup. You already have one. Northbound, same situation. The state owns the property. There's already a traffic light there because of the Exit 12. We're not talking about a massive four or five-lane highway here. We're talking about a one-vehicle-wide lane to get on and off the turnpike. Now, when I asked DOT at a Merrimack Highway Safety Committee meeting, why Exit 12 was not included into the turnpike expansion project, because this is the time to do it. What are you going to do, expand the turnpike in 45 years from now? Tear it apart to expand it? Talk about a waste of money? So when I asked why it wasn't included, they floored me with the answer. Nobody asked. I hate to disagree with somebody, but we've been asking about this for a long time. For DOT to come up to a, a meeting in Merrimack and say, well, nobody ever asked for it, is not accurate. So we're asking you, if, as an example, if there was any kind of major accident, or any kind of accident at that time of day, either in the morning and night, there is no way that emergency vehicles can get in and out of there. It's impossible. The traffic is up against the side of the road. They have no place to move over, and there's no way they can go. It's a real safety issue. It has to be there's no way they can go. It's a real safety issue. It has to be addressed. And kicking a can down the road like it's been happening, now, some of you know I've been around for a while, you know how I feel about the tolls. You're not even going to go down that road.
And I think you know three minutes.
I know I'm over three minutes, but this is it. I want the records to show that Merrimack is asking for this full interchange on Exit 12. Hey, Mr., I have a letter here from a constituent. Would you want me to read it, or just a minute?
Just enter it into...
Okay. Basically, what he says, he supports basically what I said.
Thank you.
Who do I give it to? Thank you.
Peter Albert.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, all you folks. Peter Albert, 12 Roberta Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I'm also on the Town Council. I guess I want to point something out real fast. Is, this meeting is in Bedford, a lot of the topics are about Bedford, but it would appear that the majority of the folks here are from Merrimack, so that should send a message to the DOT and the commission. I would like to echo the thoughts of the folks that have come up here. I guess one of the things that came up, that jumped out at me, was that the, the project in Bedford regarding Hawthorne Drive to the Airport roadway, was there any consideration given to what's already been discussed here about DW Highway south to Bedford Road, the issues there, the bottlenecks and so forth?
South into the Town of Merrimack?
Yes.
I don't know if explicitly that's been considered as part of this project. Bedford, Bedford's request was specific to Hawthorne Drive to the Airport Access Road.
So Bedford had to make that request?
Bedford did make that request.
DOT has heard nothing from Merrimack regarding our end of it?
I can't speak for what DOT has heard.
Okay, all right. Because this is, you know, and you've said, Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission has solicited jobs from communities. This is exactly what's happening tonight, is we're putting this job in front of you, this job regarding Bedford Road, DW Highway, and so forth, and we're asking for some help here. It's not good, it's a bad situation. Also, I wanted to talk about the Everett Turnpike expansion itself. The barriers, I noticed the sound barriers, there's been a number of areas that were proposed that were looked at for sound barriers, and only about half of them got accepted. What I'm concerned is, is a number of areas along that turnpike that are very close to the turnpike, we were told because of population density and because of sound testing, they didn't need it. I dispute that. I mean, you've got some neighborhoods on top of that turnpike, and then when you take another 50 feet on each side of it, that's a problem. One of the excuses also given for not building a barrier because it wouldn't fit a berm, and they described how the berm would be, the height and the width and length and so forth. Well, my problem with that is, is that there are other forms of barriers that can be built, and we've seen that up and down the turnpike. So I'd ask the folks to consider adding further funding into that project for these folks that are right on top of the turnpike. It's going to affect them, it's going to affect the values of their homes. Also, the tolls. Here's another project for the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, if you want to put it. Remove the tolls at 10 and 11. There's a project, the deconstruction of those tolls. Maybe we'd see less traffic on the turnpike, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking to one gentleman in particular, but all of you, maybe we'd see less traffic on the turnpike if we got rid of those two tolls, you know? The open road tolling, I get it. Now, regarding the Bedford tolls and the open road tolling, is there going to be, are there any proposed other areas that the DOT is looking at for running the tolls up in Merrimack? Are we aware of that? I'm sorry?
What was your question?
The tolls in, at the Bedford-Merrimack line on the Everett Turnpike. Has there been any consideration, because it, I've heard rumor that it's been talked about moving those tolls. Is there, is there any truth to that?
If we are going to go towards all electronic tolling, we have discussed where the appropriate place to have a gantry would be, if it would go in the same location as the existing toll plaza, or would we move it? There's a lot of different factors that weigh into that decision.
Okay, so that leads to my question of where are those, where are those other locations you're considering?
So we're going through a feasibility study at the moment, and that's wrapping up, and then we'll be presenting that information probably in early next year.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I'll just make it quick, I just had a series of notes here. Also, at one point, there was talk of an Exit 9 that was going to, the Hudson Circumference Highway. Is that, is that, is there any movement on that? Is that ever going to happen? Or did that just kind of disappear?
That's not an active design project at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Representative Linda Gould.
Counselor, can I just make one brief clarification for the residents of Merrimack? The, the Town of Merrimack is part of the Nashua Regional Planning Commission area, so I would encourage all of you to, to coordinate closely with Jay Menkara, who is the Director of the Nashua Regional Planning Commission, and his staff. He does, his, his group does a very similar work to what we do here in the Town of Bedford and for the communities surrounding the city of Manchester. Merrimack is part of the Nashua region, and, and I would encourage all of you to bring your project requests and have them vetted through the Nashua Regional Planning Commission's process.
Yeah, and absolutely, and that's already being done. I appreciate that, but I thought you were, your organization was another person to hear some of our complaints or concerns.
Appreciate that.
Representative Linda Gould.
Okay, all right, Linda Gould, Representative Linda Gould from Bedford, and I'm going on a different tack, track entirely. I agree with this Exit 12 information that you've been heard, been hearing. But I come from the active transportation angle of it, and although I don't have any concerns about here at Bedford, our local highway department person is doing a good job with striping our roads. But there's no way really to get from Manchester to Concord, and I don't know, a rail trail maybe isn't really feasible, but Route 3, if it could be either added to along the side, or a good shoulder, extra shoulder being put along there so people can get from Manchester to Concord somehow, that could be perhaps looked at. And also, Route 16 between Errol and Berle in New Hampshire, there's a section there that's being redone, and I'm hoping that the striping on that road is very good with a good shoulder on the, on the side. And the section between Errol and Berle is not well lined, striped for people who are bicycling, or walking probably too, but probably is bicycling. And so it's not good for active transportation in that respect. Between Errol and Colebrook, it's excellent, especially where you redid the road there. I think it's Route 26, excellent. And also between Errol and the notch, it's wonderful. But Errol to Berle has a lot to be improved, and that's all I want to mention to you. Okay.
Bill Boyd?
Thank you. Bill Boyd, 139 Jopper Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I'm also a Town Counselor in Merrimack, and I want to support and amplify the previous comments that have been made regarding the proposed study that has been suggested tonight as it relates to Bedford Road on Exit 12, all the way up to the Raymond Wazouric Access Road. I also want to amplify the comments made by my colleague, Counselor Albert, regarding noise barriers that are going to negatively impact three communities along the, along the F.E. Everett Turnpike. East Ridge Condominium, Maple Ridge, and Webster Green are going to be directly impacted by the widening of the F.E. Everett Turnpike. And to suggest that there is an inability to provide sound barriers for these people that are going to be negatively impacted by that project, I think is, is not responsible. And I would encourage the DOT to revisit that particular issue and consider putting sound barriers along the stretch road where these neighborhoods are going to be impacted. Lastly, since we are talking about widening the F.E. Everett Turnpike, and because we are dealing with significant drop in traffic along Daniel Webster Highway, I would encourage the Department of Transportation to consider creating emergency access roads off the F.E. Everett Turnpike on, either on, on the, primarily on the northbound east side of the Everett Turnpike, specifically focusing on the new project that's been built at the Old Shaw's Plaza, which is now known as Merrimack 360, and on the northbound side beyond Bedford Road by the Merrimack Tenpin and the Merrimack Medical Center. It would be an improvement for our public safety apparatus to have access to those particular parts of town on the off-chance that there is significant congestion in bottlenecks that may be existing at Daniel Webster if an emergency should occur. There's only one emergency access road that's at the high school. It's, it is centrally located, I don't disagree with that. But having additional emergency access feeder roads off of the turnpike that would allow public safety personnel to be able to access those particular areas of town, or properties that may be tightly tucked in that particular area along the turnpike, would be beneficial to that access. So I'd ask the DOT to consider that in their deliberations as a part of the ten-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Super.
Hi, I'm Paula Super, and I wasn't coerced to come here tonight. I don't want you to think, you know, I have a very black eye, people have been wondering. I live, I live about a half a mile from the Exit 11. I've been in Merrimack for almost 40 years, and it, for me, it's, it's the traffic situation that's getting so bad now. I come home at night, you don't have time to be with your family and do all the evening things you want to do because it took so long to get off the turnpike, and the cars just, they just piled high. So I understand the, the talk about Exit 12, and I agree with everything that's been said about that. But Exit 11's lived with tolls for a long time. And we keep telling, we keep being told, oh yeah, we'll get rid of them, but nobody ever does. Be great to have the electronic monitoring at the Bedford Toll Plaza, that will help a lot. But I understand that the Exit 10 and 11 toll ramps' construction bond will be pay off in April. Is that so? No?
No, there's additional bonds that won't be paid off until 2024.
So in 2024, can they remove the toll booths?
The legislature has been debating whether or not that's appropriate.
Debating, okay. Well, they'll probably debate forever, but I at least wanted to come up and, and talk about the, the things because we do need your help very much. Thank you.
Tom Koenig? Koenig?
Koenig.
Koenig.
Koenig, yes, sir. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Tom Koenig, Town Council of Merrimack. I wanted to speak for just a minute to support all of the other things that you've heard specifically from Kyle Fox and our Town Manager for all the projects that are in Merrimack on the ten-year plan, if we could make sure that those either get moved forward to be dated appropriately with the, the trail project, or make sure that the bridge work and things like that stay on the, the plan. I would appreciate that. I also want to support the other efforts, the other discussions about Exit 12, northbound entrance and southbound exit possibilities for helping to mitigate some of the traffic issues on the northern portion of DW Highway. And I wanted to, to just mention that we spent a lot of money on the Bedford Main Line tolls not that many years ago, probably $10 million, and now we're talking about $16 million to convert it to open road or, or all electronic tolling. And I would hope that we could maybe push that out in order to get some other projects in earlier, in order to alleviate some of the other problems, and maybe that would help us, as we're talking about expanding the Everett Turnpike, get the right project done as completely as possible, given that those tolls are functioning, in my opinion, since I go through them daily, the way they are. And the widening won't be impacted by it, I think we could probably push that project back several years and still be able to continue to get good service through that position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Representative Rosemarie Ray?
Good evening and thank you. I want to thank the Governor's Commission on Intermodal Transportation for holding these public hearings around the state. I commented on the one held in Nashua two weeks ago, and want to bring forth additional information. When I did receive a, a message from a constituent who asked me to submit it, I won't read it, but I'll just submit it. And I also want to echo what, what's also been said by previous speakers. One is to, you know, a couple things that came to mind from their comments is to expand Bedford Project 4664 to extend Route 3 widening, and I understand what Representative LaRue said, but if there could be consideration for the stretch of Route 3 up to Merrim, up to Bedford Road, and consider consolidating that with Project 15841, the reconstruction of the Bedford Road overpass. And the other thing I want to talk about is about tolls. Mr. Payne talked about the traffic that interferes with the normal commute and, and just activity of residents in the north end of Merrimack that live off of Route 3. I'd also want to say that probably toll aversion throughout Route 3 in Merrimack also contributes to the traffic of that area. And in my previous comments that I've made to state and local meetings, I requested that toll relief for Merrimack be brought to Merrimack, and, and in Nashua, I asked it to be included in the ten-year plan. I've been told several times since assuming office this year that the tolls were intended to pay for construction, and that the bonds financing that construction were not going to be paid off until 2024. However, I've recently come across the minutes from a December 6, 2017 Governor and Executive Council meeting, where DOT submitted a request to increase tolls and eliminate the Exit 10 and Exit 11 ramp tolls in Merrimack, specifically to, and I quote, authorize eliminate the toll rate at Exit 10 and 11 toll plazas in Merrimack effective April 1, 2020, which reflects the date of the final payment on the bonds used to finance the Merrimack Exit 10 and 11 construction. When I questioned Deputy Commissioner Christopher Wacheck about this yesterday, he told me that a second bond was taken out four years later, in 1994, to cover remaining construction costs and landscaping. DOT considers the payoff of that bond in 2024, as you mentioned earlier, Commissioner Sheen, to be the completion of the financing, but I disagree with that. Construction was completed when the ramp opened and began accepting tolls in 1990. Landscaping and other improvements that came along four years later should not extend the ball and chain Merrimack residents have had to endure through tolls, particularly when the first 15 miles of the Everett Turnpike, the busiest, have enjoyed new exits, new interchanges to connect with Hudson, widening without requiring those travelers to pay one cent in tolls. Thank you.
Joel Folliard?
Thank you. I'm going to make it brief because everybody from Merrimack who has said just what needs to be said. I live at Webster Green Condos, which is between Bedford Road and Exit 13. And when I first moved there, about six and a half years ago, I work off of industrial, so it's about a 7.2 miles for me to get to work. When I moved into Webster Green six and a half years ago, it took me 20 to 25 minutes to get to work driving down the DW Highway. Fast forward to today, I have to be to work at 8:30 at my desk, ready to go. In order for me to be 100% positive that I'm getting to work on time, I have to be on the road at 7:45, not leaving my house in the car, driving, so I can get to work on time. That's just in six and a half years. A lot of it happened, like Rosemarie said about toll, toll evaders, whatever you want to do, extra traffic. It has very, very much gotten out of control in just the six and a half years I've been there. And I'd really like to see some kind of expansion to be able to take care of that, including what was happening up at Exit 13 with the expansion for Bedford. I can't say much more than anything else because everybody else has covered it, but I figured you needed to hear a personal aspect of someone who has to fight their way down DW Highway every day to go to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Tenneh?
Ashley Tenneh, 75, Shelburne Road, Webster Green. I'm just up here to echo again all of the rest of the Merrimack residents. It takes me 20 minutes to take a left out of Webster Green onto Route 3 to get to work in Bedford. 20 minutes that I sit there and wait for an opening in traffic. A lot of this has happened since the Exit 13 was put there. People avoiding the tolls, the extra traffic, people coming People avoiding the tolls, the extra traffic, people coming off the highway when there's an accident. The Flatley Project is also not happening. They are going to put an entrance into the Flatley Project right across the street from Webster Green. This is not going to help our residents to be able to get out. We are trapped in our community, and it's not fair. We have asked for a "do not block" sign to be put onto Route 3, so that our area where we have to exit and enter isn't blocked by people stopping, because they'll stop right in front of you. They don't care. We have asked for a "do not block", we have been denied. We have asked for other ways to try and make it so that we can get out of our community, and nothing's happened. We have asked our planning board, we have brought it to Town Council, and we're stopped because it's not a town of Merrimack thing, it is a DOT. So we are asking DOT to do something to help us. You're expanding Hawthorne Road to exit 13? That's great. We need to be expanded, or something needs to be done for our end. It should not take me sitting there for 20 minutes just to get out of my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ray Breslin, 3 Gary Drive. I've spoken at some of these other meetings, and I'll try to be brief, but as some people know, or perhaps do not know, there have been corrections made in the handouts, which needed to be done, okay? And, but the monies that have been, where has that money been applied? In particular, what we're talking about is trails and pedestrians, okay? I have nothing against trails and pedestrians, very important, okay? But the figures that are in the original reports were incorrect, now they have been corrected. Now we've gone from $341 million down to, let me see, something like $4 million. Okay, so where has that money now been applied? Where it should be applied, and a lot of people have talked about safety. Safety is premier, okay? And so, should it be applied perhaps to redless bridges and roadways, and to some of these other projects which are safety issues? I would like an answer to that, maybe not tonight, but at some point. Now, what we're talking about is priorities. Where were we spending the money? Okay? Once again, rail trails and pedestrians are very important and a nice thing, but they're really not about public safety, except for pedestrians. I'll take that back. Another thing we have here is, I'm from Londonderry, we have exit 4A off 93. We've been hearing for a long time, over a year, fully funded at $56 million. Now, all of a sudden, we're here, it's been increased, not by 40 million, not by, no, it's been increased by $40 million, not $4 million, $40 million. I would like to know what caused this increase on a project that quite frankly, at least in my limited opinion, is not going to provide what it's supposed to do, and that is to decrease the traffic flow through the town of Derry. What this is going to do is it's going to dump interstate traffic on 93, into the town of Derry approximately 3/4 a mile from downtown Derry. Not a good idea. That money should be spent in another way, on priority projects. We need to look at money for other transportation modes. Right now, in the 10-year plan, I think there's something around $10 million for other modes of transportation, like trains, okay? Well, what kind of trains? The old kinds of trains, we've torn them up, we've made rail trails. However, if we went to Disney World, we'd see a monorail. Maybe we should look towards the future and think about monorails, okay? Everything costs money. We need to spend money on bridge maintenance. We've got all kinds of redless bridges. Why do we have redless bridges? We put salt on the road, it corrodes steel, which a lot of them are steel girders. We got a problem with 93. Guess why it's not open to four lanes? They don't have the clearance for the fourth lane, because I don't think we have the necessary permits from the EPA. So now, a lot of places on 93 are still only two lanes after all this time. How long's it been? Probably around 10 years. What is the total on 93? That's, I would like to know that. Does anybody know what the current total is on Route 93?
Total cost of the project is $780 million.
At this time?
It's $780 million.
Okay, I don't know, I've seen newspaper articles, it says it's over $800 million currently, and yet, we're still looking to the future to finish it.
Thank you, Mr. Breslin, for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'd like to thank all of you for coming to this hearing. I appreciate you taking the time to come and make your comments. All comments will be taken under advisement. There will be no other comments. I hereby adjourn this meeting.